Don't you touch me, don't you touch me. Don't touch me, you've already assaulted one person. Problems, I'm not the one violating Missouri revised statutes. Do you understand what I just told you? No, I do not.
Citizen standpoint news. It's in the name.
Hello, everyone. This is the city of Louisiana, Missouri, and they have a long history of serious corruption. Now, I normally don't audit small towns unless they're the seat of a county government, but I will have to make an exception because this town, just in the past couple of years, has been through numerous chiefs of police and police officers, some of whom are accused of committing crimes while on the job, including, but not limited to, murder, selling meth, stealing police cars, stealing M4 rifles, planting drugs on innocent people, escalating situations to use of force, threats, coercion, and just being oath-breaking traitors. On top of the serious problems with law enforcement, I've been tipped off that this city council willfully violates citizens' First Amendment rights to speak at council meetings, Fifth Amendment rights to due process, and Missouri sunshine law by not posting meeting changes within 48-hour notice or on their website, closing meetings improperly, ignoring the agenda items altogether. So, I decided to stop by and check on them. All relevant contact information will be in the description box. Thanks for watching.
Here. There being a form, I'll call this meeting to order. Please give the invitation. Lord God, you love the city. And you desire the well-being of a community. I pray, Father, that in these days where some really important decisions are made, that you would not only provide wisdom and a sense of discernment for this council, but those who provide advice and counsel as well would be able to speak into things that are often very complex. We pray, Lord, for unity in our community. We pray for care, neighbor to neighbor. We pray for patience. We pray, Lord, that there would be respect and honor. We pray that, Lord, as we do work together, that this community would thrive, it would experience success, it would experience some of the best days ever. And I pray that, Lord, you would help us to look to you because we need help. We really need understanding that goes beyond our experiences and our educations. And so, Lord, we ask you to guide this meeting this evening, and may there be a sense of peace and calm in this room, we pray. In Jesus' name, amen.
And Councilman Bell, would you do the honors of leading us to the pledge?
Everyone needs to take their ball caps off.
Sir? Sir?
Can you take your ball cap off, sir?
No.
You're going to do a pledge of allegiance.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
You need to take your ball cap off.
Or leave.
Or leave, this is a pledge of allegiance. You don't honor your country?
I'm honoring it right now.
No, you're not. You're being very disrespectful. You should be thankful to live in this country.
Go ahead, Councilman.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Orange park and then...
Yeah, I'd like to see most of the veterans' parks.
And we are not forgetting any other parks. We are working on all the parks. If you've noticed, we've done things throughout the year, if you've noticed. If you haven't noticed, you wouldn't notice it.
Well, I don't like it, so I understand.
You're trying to write the check.
All right, I'll bring it up again. Now, perhaps I will be dead by the time the debt service is paid off. However, as I said before, the ordinance reads that that charge will not come off your bill once it's paid off.
You're absolutely correct.
I know I am. So, what about that? Why aren't you going to change that ordinance so that that fee goes away?
There's not an emergent need until 31 to do that. And at that time, if we're doing good and everything else, I'd be all in favor of dropping it.
Otherwise, we're going to be paying it for pencil.
Yep, and that's not the only tax that's like that.
Right, but we're discussing water right now.
Yeah, and it sells taxes like that, water rates are like that.
I understand.
That's how the previous councils made this.
But this is now, and this is this council, and there's nothing that keeps you from changing the ordinance. So, when the debt service is paid off, it goes away off the water.
Yep. You're absolutely right.
Good evening. My name is Sheria Morrison, and first off, I want to say that I find it a little unsettling that my name was not added to the agenda when you called me and you said that it would be put on there.
Let me address that real quick. And when I did speak to you, I said I will let you speak at the beginning of the meeting with public comment section. But it's not an agenda item, but yes, you're allowed to speak as you are allowed to speak right now.
Okay. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. We know city governance isn't easy, and we appreciate your work on the behalf of the community. We formed a concerned citizen group to advocate for transparency, accountability, and public trust across Pike County, and that includes here in Louisiana. We're here because public confidence in our local system, including law enforcement, has been shaken, not by one event, but by a pattern. And while the current focus has been on the Pike County Sheriff's Office, the truth is every department, every city, and every official that stays silent risks being part of the problem. Louisiana PD has faced its own sheriff concerns in recent years. While we're not here to revisit any specific cases, we are here to say loudly and clearly, the public deserves to know that oversight exists. Across Pike County, we've seen questionable incidents, whistleblower allegations, and troubling lack of follow-up or transparency from agencies that work alongside Louisiana Police Department. This isn't isolated. It's systemic. Sorry.
Can you talk?
Systemic. When departments stay silent or fail to communicate publicly and send a message, we're not accountable to the people who pay us. We're organizing, we're filing sunshine requests, and we're formally petitioning for a civilian oversight board for Pike County under Missouri statute number 590.653, a statute that explicitly gives city and counties the authority to create these boards. But we're not stopping there. Louisiana is a municipality with its own police department, and under the same law, this council can create its own oversight board for Louisiana Police Department, a body made up of residents with a clear process for reviewing complaints, patterns, and public concerns. We're asking you to take this step, and we're here to help you do it. What we're asking from this council, support the Pike County COB petition. You may not control the sheriff's office, but a public statement of support would help. Work with us to explain a city of Louisiana civilian oversight board, whether through resolution, ordinance, or committee. The city has the power to lead by example. Commit to transparency around Louisiana Police Department operations. This could include public access to policy manuals, complaint procedures, use of force data, budget, and more. Stay with your constituents. We're asking for a public acknowledgement that these concerns are valid and that this council believes in oversight, not silence. You are trusted by your committee to lead. That trust is shaken, not just by one department, but by a countywide silence that has persisted too long. We're not asking you to fix everything overnight. We're asking you to start by listening, by acting, and by helping rebuild public faith in the system meant to serve us. This is your opportunity to lead, and we hope you'll take it.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison.
Can I use this?
Excuse me?
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead. As you're doing that, I do want to respond to that if the council don't have an issue, but the public needs to know, you know, in 2022, as I spoke with you over the phone, I ran for mayor specifically because we had a corrupt police department. And since my first six months in office, we've dealt with a lot of turmoil with a corrupt police department and a not-so-pleasant council. We did turn the page, and we did do so even at the cost or sacrifice of a young man's life. It wasn't my voice, it was that young man that lost his... I'll end with this. We have gotten rid of 10 officers since I became mayor because they didn't meet our standards. So, your points are valid, and I don't have any issues with your suggestions going before this council. And we always stand on the side of transparency. This council, we address issues as they come before us. It's not always going to be popular, and we're never going to make everyone happy. I know that as a fact. I feel for the families' losses that lost loved ones prior to me coming into office and those in the county that have been lost since. This city and this council and our citizens demand that we have a legitimate and professional police department. And even though we may have some disagreements with certain citizens in the town, I believe we are on that path now. You know how hard it is to come back after a corrupt police department leaves its weight upon a city? It took years to get up to stand up. Can I say something? Thank you. I've been on the council a year, okay? And while we still have a way to go, you can always improve. The improvement in this police department in the year that I've been on the council and the years before that, when I was the wall of the city government, you know, as a citizen, is light years compared to where we were now, where we're at now compared to where we were. I sit on the committee of the council that deals with police issues, and I will tell you right now, we vet these people, we turn down as many as we approve, and we jump through all the hoops, and we dot all the i's and all the t's to make sure that we're getting high-quality, professional police officers. Because just from where I'm coming from, one of the obligations of city government is police protection, water, and streets, okay? And I think as a credit, yeah, we have a long way to go, and we do disagree on things at times, okay? But everybody in this city government is committed to having the highest quality and most professional police department that we can have. And I will tell you, one of the challenges that we run up against is that nobody wants to be a cop anymore. And so, what we deal with sometimes are people coming in here for whatever reasons they want to apply, and we have to reject them because their heart isn't in the right place with respect to policing and the use of deadly force and some other issues that we deal with. And so, this committee and this council is on top of this problem, and we're working hard. And can we do it better? We can always do it better, but I think, and I have no disagreement like the mayor with any of this stuff, but we're working on it. We're not the problem anymore.
My thing is, is that I feel like we've all heard the things that has happened. Even you, Mayor, you even told me, "Well, I'm going to be quiet because now it has nothing to do with us." For once, it doesn't have anything to do with us. Then who, if we're God-made this world for us to tend it and take care of it, and that means as people, us as a people, we're supposed to be the ones tending to it. So, if we continue to be quiet on certain things, then where does that leave people? To trust in anything, in humanity?
I get what you're saying. Our best hope is to lead by example, and that's what we're trying to do.
We have turned down so many people. I check almost a weekly basis, maybe more than once a week with Dodd, who's on the police committee, and say, "Where are we on the officers? What have we got?"
I didn't even come here to knock you or to be combative.
I don't take anything. No, no, no. I just want to try to be transparent here right now. And we've certainly, we have fired several of reasons, of which we've gotten some heat because of that. And I have to say that Josh Baker has, they have, they may have made some mistakes, I don't know, but you tried working the kind of schedule they were working after the situation we had, when basically, we had, what, two police officers? They were trying to take care of everything? I mean, it was, talk about impossible. So, we really worked on it, we really have now. The idea of having a citizen review board, I don't have a problem with that, but we're being as open as we can. The question is, how do we go about doing that? I don't know. Is this another question? Are they going to be qualified? So, you have to know what you're doing.
I'm going.
Like a police officer.
So, but this is for the citizens to oversee it? So, you have to have qualifications to?
We can't give away our statutory duty. Even though we can include citizens, members will still be from this board as well. But I thank you for your time, and if you want to engage in such more in detail, I'd say, probably come attend our horse stepping session.
Yes.
Certainly.
It's food for thought.
It is definitely food for thought.
Okay. She has a good point. The only problem is, you don't want to get good police officers in this town, along with you have Chief Baker, who's chief. Officers don't, good officers do not want to work for that man. They're not going to, and you're hiring family, you're hiring friends, are you hiring the most qualified people, or are you just hiring them because of your friends? Now, for five months, I've been denied to speak at council meetings. I've turned letters in like I was supposed to. I have no answer, I don't get no answers, I'm just told I can't speak. A while ago, they went through real quick before I could get up and say anything, they lied, don't I get an answer to my letters for speaking? I follow the regulations. I write the letter, I turn it in before Wednesday, I get no answers. I'm not on the agenda, she wasn't on the agenda. Do you pick and choose who speaks and what they speak about?
Yeah, actually, I do control the agenda, and your item is not an agenda item.
Her item wasn't agenda either.
And she spoke, and you're speaking right now, Mr. Henry.
But I'm not done.
But you got about a minute and a half left.
Yeah, so everybody else gets all the time they want, but I only get three minutes, huh? No, people do not want to work for him. Free, honest, my office is always open. Can't go by getting to see you, or about anybody can come up to council meeting and just get up, walk up, speak about what they want. That didn't last long. Now, because I get up and ask questions, I have to write a letter, turn it in.
So, you can go ahead and tell us what your question is instead of complaining? We'd like to know.
Please do not interrupt me when I'm speaking, sir. I'm not allowed to interrupt anybody here, and you should set an example.
You go right ahead.
You got police officers, you got council members, from under noses to public, breaking the laws, breaking the ordinances that they took an oath to uphold. I was verbally assaulted, threatened, and physically assaulted by Councilman Giltner, which I have not found out why because he did not like me, and I was trying to turn in a letter that you told me I had to give to him to speak at the meeting, and... All pretty good. Another letter. So, you're not taking the letter?
No, I don't.
You're not taking my letter?
No, I'm not.
I'm supposed to give my councilman.
You got it.
Why are you refusing the letter?
Because I don't like you, that's why, and I'm not your personal mailman.
I was threatened and assaulted, and then he lied in court about it. I have proof of that, too.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Henry.
Okay.
I would like to add, I still...
Excuse me, Councilman Twitchell's always talking after I get done, so I cannot answer him. I don't be allowed to answer him?
I would like you to answer. What was your question? Councilman. Yeah, we had no consideration, guys. We just got out, closed session, we just adjourned. There was no other action items.
That might not be right, Jim, but that's the number of the sticking in.
Closing the meeting without telling anybody?
Again.
I hear that a lot. I couldn't do your hours. I'm serious, I really couldn't.
The very first time I came here and had a meeting, there was almost a fight out in the parking lot.
Oh, my.
Oh, that was probably...
That was private.
That's the first time she's been back here since then. Yeah, she hasn't really been...
No, I don't understand what... He never has anything to talk about, it's the same shit.
It's been hard either, I thought he was still in town. I'm out here full of doors, I'm going to fuck you. Actually, don't fuck me anyway.
No, I'm third one.
We want to make everything better, we get one or seven, run everybody down and be negative.
She's the one that started spreading the shit on us tearing down Lincoln Park.
Yeah, which was never part of it.
I'm going on, I'm going to the wire.
Thank you.
I do have a question. Why wouldn't you remove your hat?
Because I'm not required to by law.
No, is that the only reason? I mean, you couldn't take it off for God?
For God? What's God got to do with taking off my hat?
We were saying the prayer, that's what.
Okay, am I required by law to say a prayer?
No, no, you're not. You're not required to be an asshole either.
All right, so you just got your city wrapped up in a lawsuit. City wrapped up in a lawsuit.
Hey, you! Don!
Ah, well, how old are you?
Is this your car, sir? O U R M A C? Check them cans. Hey, Councilman, could I ask you a couple of questions? Is there any United States code?
I will not answer a question that, you're an American, and you don't act like an American. I know I'm on film.
Okay. But what I'm asking you, are you aware of any United States code or Missouri revised statutes or Pike County ordinance or city Louisiana ordinance? You threaten me.
I did not threaten you to take that off. I'm not going to play your silly-ass little kid and foolish games, so get that out of my face.
It's not in your face, sir.
Yes, it is.
Where are you going, right here? Is this your car?
Nope. I'm walking.
I can see that. You're not very bright.
And you're not very stupid.
Well, you got one thing right there, Councilman. One thing right.
May God bless you.
Yeah, you too. Hey, and when you guys have to show up to court to answer for all that stupid shit you did back there, I hope you take that attitude with the judge.
Okay, so, they have an ordinance.
Okay.
That says you have to get permission to speak at a meeting.
Really?
Yes. I can't pull it up.
I can find it real quick.
It's one of the ordinances, they just created it this year to keep Steve Henry from speaking.
Yeah, and why did they dislike him so much? Because what I heard up there, he didn't say anything really... He can get up there and basically call you guys every name under the sun, from what I understand, from my understanding of the law.
You get that ordinance and see what it says, and you'll see that it has a chilling effect.
Yes, it does.
Just like the lady that got up to speak today, you know, she went through the procedure, now the mayor went out of his way to call her because he knew he had better get it taken care of, right? He didn't do it out of courtesy.
Correct.
He did it politically.
Yes.
It was motivated politically.
What I told him...
I'm trying to talk to him about...
Don't you touch me, don't you touch me. Don't touch me, you've already assaulted one person before. There's a law officer right standing right next to you, you will go to jail. Don't you touch me, don't you touch me. Don't touch me, you've already assaulted one person before. There's a law officer right standing right next to you, you will go to jail.
You don't put that in my face.
I didn't put it in your face, you walked up to me, didn't you? The camera's going to show that, you guys are garbage. This dumpster fire town, I caught you violating Sunshine Act and constitutional law. Yep, you're going to have to answer. I'm not one of these locals that you can friggin' influence, sir. You're going to figure that out the hard way. Wait until you walk into a courtroom with that attitude. Oh, absolutely, I'm sure he is recording. You're a public official threatening journalist.
I didn't threaten you. I didn't threaten you. Not at all.
So, if I stepped up to you in the same manner you just stepped up to me, you wouldn't take that as a threat? If you don't, you're a damn fool, I'll tell you that.
Please don't, wait a minute. A little bit of respect, I mean, this means orderly.
I didn't put it in your face, you walked up to me, didn't you? The camera's gonna show that. You guys are garbage. This dumpster fire town, I caught you violating Sunshine Act and constitutional law. Yep, you're gonna have to answer. I'm not one of these locals that you can friggin' influence, sir. You're gonna figure that out the hard way. Wait until you walk into a courtroom with that attitude. Oh, absolutely, he, he, I'm sure he is recording. You're a public official threatening journalist.
I didn't threaten you. I didn't threaten you. Not at all.
So come, if I stepped up to you in the same manner you just stepped up to me, you wouldn't take that as a threat? If you don't, you're a damn fool, I'll tell you that.
Please, Don, like, wait a minute.
Now.
Little bit of respect, I mean, this man's elderly.
He should respect others if he wants respect.
This man's done a lot for this town.
Oh, I can see that.
No, he hasn't.
I'm being sarcastic.
Okay, you all stop jumping on the man.
No, he, he's welcome to leave anytime he wants, I'm not withhold, keeping him here. He, he must like the camera time.
Okay, Don.
Yeah, he's trying to get the chief to arrest me and the chief knows who I am. I'm serious about that lawsuit. You guys have had enough problems and you guys keep on creating them and that's why they keep on coming back, just like that lady said, there's been a pattern and you're part of that pattern, sir.
And what do you know about that pattern? Cause you can get this on camera. That was my feeling, that was murdered down there. Where's all that at? Leave it the hell alone.
Go away, crazy ass.
No!
Yeah.
That's what sits in you, harassing an elderly man like that.
I wanna ask a real simple question.
Okay, sure.
When did you quit being civil?
When?
Why, why do we have to be using foul language about a woman?
Uh, you weren't here for the entire conversation, sir.
No, I wasn't. But that doesn't mean that there's any reason to quit being civil. I would like to know why you...
Don't block my camera, don't block my camera, you're gonna get sued, I'm telling you.
But I'm asking you a question and you respond, refuse to respond to me. Why, why are you not responding to me?
You want your 10 seconds of fame too?
I just wanna know why you can't be civil.
You're blocking my camera, get out of the way.
Well, you know, there's...
You're violating my First Amendment rights, last time I'm warning you, I will file suit against you, sir.
Your First Amendment rights to what?
Document the friggin', a public official's breaking the law. How much you wanna bet he's gonna break the law leaving this parking lot?
How, how is he gonna do that? He's driving? He's driving slowly?
Yep.
He's gonna stop at the corner like anybody else?
Right there, he broke it right there.
Why's that?
That's not a complete stop.
There's no stop sign.
There's no turn signal either.
There's no traffic coming?
Doesn't matter.
And you're making him quite nervous.
Doesn't matter.
And you're not being civil.
Oh, it doesn't matter, I don't have to be civil with you, you're a friggin' crook. You're a friggin' crook. That's exactly what this town is filled with. Your public officials up there violating Missouri revised statutes and you have the audacity to come out here and say I'm the one causing problems. I'm not the one violating Missouri revised statutes. Do you understand what I just told you?
No, I do not.
Oh, you're gonna get it explained in writing, sir.
You're saying that I'm a crook?
Are you not a member of that council?
Would you like to tell me specifically what, what I've done that's wrong?
Uh, violate Sunshine Act, you violated multiple people's constitutional, you, hold on.
What Sunshine Act? On the wrong side of the road, on the sidewalk. Here's the police chief, I've asked the police chief if I'm walking, if I'm doing anything wrong with how I park on my own property.
What's your own property? Where's your own property at?
Here in town.
Here in town? So where, your own property right now?
Yes.
This is your own property?
No, on my own town, in my, in my own house.
So are you, uh, are you a resident of Louisiana?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So you are a council member, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is the property we're standing on your personal property?
No.
Okay. Well, maybe I misunderstood you.
Yes, you did. But you also are misunderstanding what he's saying. He's saying that I'm parking illegally. I've asked the police chief if I was, I was parking illegally.
I'm not here for your parking, I don't know where the hell this is coming out.
He's saying that I'm corrupt because I park wrong. Now, you're saying I'm corrupt because I did something with Sunshine Law? What did I do with Sunshine Law?
Oh, buddy, you're gonna figure it out. You're that ignorant of the law, you probably, you probably need, I didn't see a city attorney in there. I asked...
She was the girl sitting on the very end in the front row.
That's, I thought that was a city clerk, honestly. I would love to have a chat with her about what the Missouri Sunshine Act has in there about closing public meetings, sir. You closed that public meeting without letting the public back in. You had already closed it before everybody came in, that is without a doubt a violation of Sunshine. Now, I'm not done. You violated multiple people's First Amendment rights, you didn't abide by Roberts rules, which isn't a law, but it, it, it's a, it's a mode of operation for a city council meeting. And you guys allowed one speaker to have more time and you cut him short and you interrupted him when he was speaking and from what I understand, this individual right here that has enough sense to video record all this, had, knew full well that you guys weren't allowed to do that. He can call you every name under the sun, every name under the sun, he just can't violate your civil rights or threaten you. That's it. And I'll get you in front of a judge, that's fine. I, I know you don't believe it, sir. I, I've got a track record here, bud.
That's fine.
There's a reason the chief is standing right here watching this all go down and not placing cuffs on me. You realize that? I know what you guys do to people in this town. I'm not from this town.
I really wanted to hear what he had to say.
I did too, but we couldn't get it through because you got public officials interrupting him in, in the middle of his own three minutes. Let him say his piece and then ignore him. It's not hard. We have a transvestite that wears a dress at our city council meeting and says all sorts of crazy shit and, and that guy was completely reasonable.
I said, "Okay," and I backed off and I said, "Talk."
Yeah, you shouldn't have interrupted him to begin with. He had his three minutes and you took like 20 seconds of his three minutes and then, and then...
Maybe, maybe seven seconds. And...
And then you threatened him to throw him out of the council room twice. And he was quite reasonable. He may have been a, a problem before, but what I witnessed there was quite reasonable behavior for an angry citizen.
I did not threaten to throw him out.
The mayor did, you're, you're right, you did not.
I did not.
You, you had enough sense to shut up, but you haven't figured that part out yet now. You're gonna, you're fighting a losing battle with me, man.
And you're probably right that I shouldn't have interrupted him.
Thank you.
And I, I agree.
For being reasonable.
And so I'm, I'm, I will not, and that's, if you'll notice, once he said that, what did I do? I sat back and said, "Okay."
Yep, fair enough.
See how he did it, laughing and throwing...
That, that's okay, he can behave like a child. He can behave like a child, it's perfectly legal.
Okay.
Yeah, your city attorney needs to advise your council on certain aspects of the laws of the state of Missouri and the United States, sir.
I wanted him to continue.
And just a heads up, when, when I say United States, you violated United States law, that will be in federal court. Do you understand that?
I'm, I'm, I actually wanted him to continue.
I did too. I think, I think my viewers wanna hear what he has to say about the city because I'm gonna guess that he's gonna tell more truth than any of you on that council just did.
I would disagree with that. But I did want to hear more of what he said.
I did too.
I was overruled, if you notice.
Yeah, I did notice that.
I did want to know more of what he said.
And your mayor's out there.
I, I knew that I should not have interrupted him, I maybe took up seven seconds. And that's why I asked for him to please go ahead.
Yep. And, 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 and I'm gonna listen to this guy...
You can't fault me for, for Sunshine, that I, or that I was trying to keep him from talking.
That's not Sunshine, that's a First Amendment right.
Well...
Both under the Missouri and United States constitution.
Because I wanted him to continue.
And I heard that too.
Have I ever called you an...
And by the way, just a heads up, I'm gonna let you know, my understanding of the law, that's harassment, what he just did to you. Now, you could've called him a cocksucker, it'd have been perfectly legal, but him calling you a cocksucker is not.
I have never raised my voice, cussing.
You did not.
I have not said anything to you like that, nor have I said anything to him like that.
Sure.
So, we're kind of, we're painting with an awfully wide brush here.
Everybody has that freedom of speech.
But freedom of speech is only direct, speech directed at the government, it's not towards a private individual. We have harassment, libel, and slander.
He, he doesn't negate his rights as a, as a private citizen.
What I would say is that you're painting all of us with a pearly wide brush.
You made it too easy for me. And, and by the way, one other thing, you skipped the media inquiry part of, of the agenda. I was gonna ask what United States code, what Missouri revised statute, what Pike County ordinance, or what Louisiana city ordinance I violated by holding a hat on my head that